Welcome to the September 18th City Council Regular Meeting. Our Mayor is a little under the weather, and as Vice Mayor, I'm gonna run my first meeting, so be gentle with me, I've never done this before. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Eisen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vervac?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, that's my chair? Okay. Oh, yeah, pull it up, pull it up, rip it off.
I have no proclamations or announcements. There's nothing to report out from our closed session. City Manager updates to Council?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have a couple of this evening. I'd like to invite Jill Ikas up, and I believe she'll be joined by Maz. I don't see Maz, so I guess John Doughty's gonna pinch her.
He apologizes, he had back-to-school night at Picasso Nursery Schools, so I told him, "Please make sure you do that." So, we're gonna talk a little bit about Poplar and what's happening there. Jill will talk about last night's event, and I'll talk a little bit about the prior week's conversation. So, we held our kickoff last week on the 6th through the BPAC, the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We had a very good attendance, and this project was part of the Complete Streets project. So, the challenge that we've kind of got with this is trying to keep the two projects somewhat together and also apart when it comes to the Poplar Gateways project, and there's a lot of overlap, and so we're working well to try to deal with those issues. So, the Complete Streets, in a nutshell, was a grant fund that we received from O-BAG, the One Bay Area Government's monies. The ideal is to look at and ultimately design and redesign Poplar from Main Street to Railroad to be more accessible to pedestrians, to be more accessible to bicyclists, to try to be cognizant of the need to traffic calm folks around, and ultimately to integrate in green infrastructure and build stormwater improvements, particularly there before it reaches the ocean, Seymour Ditch and the ocean. So, it had a great turnout, more than, I think it was about, it was 40 that signed in, I think we had closer to 50 really at the meeting. And what I want to say just in closing is that we don't have any ideas at this point other than what the basics of a complete street is, and I think some people came to the meeting expecting us to have all of this baked, and we don't have it baked. The key to what we're trying to say is, we want to hear, we want to listen, we want your ideas and thoughts, and we can work through. And we want to protect and save the trees along certain sections of Poplar as much as anybody, and so I think it was helpful for folks to hear we're in alignment.
And I have to say, that was a very good-looking meeting, and only to be a little bit overshadowed by what we did last night because where we were. I'm here to talk about the Gateways kickoff, and we came up together because we are really having to work on this as a team through your Public Works Engineering and Community Development and Planners. So, it's a full event from your first floor of City Hall. The Gateways project was instigated from a series of studies starting in 2016 from the Sea Level Rise Vulnerability Assessment and a really detailed erosion study that was conducted last year from NCE Engineering. The conclusion was, we needed to proactively plan the area, curb erosion, fixed drainage, protect the bluffs, and enhance the park for its users. We had great turnout last night, we think we had about 70 folks. We covered vision, we actually had about four stations, initial impressions, vision priorities, and the connection to the Poplar Complete Streets, that was actually a station. The most significant station was the Taco Station, we had that too. But you can see, we had a lot of folks coming in and out, they're relating to the maps, they know the area so well. We intentionally had this meeting on a Monday night, we wanted residents. We know that their input is going to make a better place for visitors too. Nobody knows it better than them, and it was just a pleasure to hear from them. And then, we just want to note next steps. We'll be working with the Parks and Rec Commission, I'll give them a really brief update, we're just reading the notes today, and we'll give them the quick overview tomorrow night, and then next month we'll have a full summary report from this session, and we'll be moving through a pace to get to another community workshop and a draft plan in the spring. So, we're clicking away. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John, thanks Jill.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to say, I attended last night's meeting very briefly, the Poplar Beach Gateway, and I thought it was really, really well-done. And there was a ton of input, I noticed, on the papers, sheets at the various stations, and the food was great, I'd like to see us do more of that, it was excellent. Thank you.
Reminded me, we have a few things here. If anybody's interested, pick up your postcard on your way out tonight, they're in English and Spanish, and they're beautiful, and tell us what you want Poplar to be in 20 years. We're pushing our minds out into the future so that we can get the future we want. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill, it really was a good presentation.
Mayor and Council and members of the public, I am thrilled to announce that the city will be hosting a voter outreach event on October 30th. We've called it Elections Night Out, and the idea is to bring down your ballot and drop it off with county election staff that will be here, and then have a meal with your neighbors. So, we do hope that everyone will join us, and if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask me. I also wanted to provide an update on our records management program, as we've made really amazing strides over the past year. Our strike team inventoried 1,200 boxes of records, so that was a huge fee, and we now have a much more comprehensive list of the city's records. We cleaned out the container that was out at the courtyard, that was full of various records and plans and boxes, and organized all of that. The files that were in the pod in the City Hall parking lot were moved to the garage of Kelly House, we have inventoried and sent off all of those, and all of the boxes that were at our off-site storage have now been inventoried, and per the retention schedule, we've purged any that we could. The city's building permits are 80% scanned, so we're close to having all of those available on Laserfish, and we have about 40 boxes of old City Council agenda packets at ECS to be scanned as well. And once we complete both of those projects, I'll be working with Laserfish to create a public module so the public can go on and research those documents for themselves.
So, wasn't there like something else about city clerk news in the past week that you'd like to talk about?
I received my Certified Municipal Clerk designation from IIMC.
Now we come to public forum, you know the regulations. Eric DeBode speaking first, followed by Kelly Archer.
Good evening, thank you very much. I was at the event last night at Poplar Beach as well, and then I was speaking with Harvey, and he asked me to just make a very brief, informal report for you all. We've been doing cleanup at the Poplar Beach area since May 15th or so. Abundant Grace hires homeless and low-income folks to clean the parking lot, the bike trail, and also the beach between Sycamore Bridge and up to Kelly. So, just quickly, and I will certainly have a more formal written report on schedule, but we average about 185 pounds of trash each morning that we're out there, which is three mornings a week, Friday, Sunday, and Monday, so before the weekend, in the middle of the weekend, and after the weekend. Since May 15th, we've picked up 485 bags of trash, approximately 9,000 pounds. We've been out 51 times, so every week, I kind of estimate, you know, we're just a few people out there, three mornings a week. There are a lot of wonderful people in the neighborhood that are also bringing up bags of trash, and they leave bags of trash at the bottom of the hill, or, you know, there's just a lot of people that are concerned about the trash and the debris out there. So, there's a lot of bottles, cans, forgotten toys, towels, clothes, furniture, furniture pallets that have a lot of nails in them, and a lot of people leave glass in the bonfires, and they break, so there's a risk, you know, for people who don't have their shoes on out there with all the nails and glass. And of course, there's horse manure everywhere. It's been shocking to me to, you know, I've never walked that stretch of the beach regularly, but it's close to the water, it's close to the cliffs, it's just everywhere. Yesterday morning, I counted 53 recent bonfire sites just between Sycamore and Poplar, so not between Poplar and Kelly, but just that stretch, like from Poplar Beach then south, 53 kind of recent-looking, you know, shapely, round, shapely sites. In other areas where there have been bonfire sites, there's just little pieces of charcoal and wood kind of scattered all over the place. So, my hope as you go forward with a plan is to really come up with a thoughtful plan to deal with the trash, the bonfires, the recycling, and the horse manure. It's a lovely place, we need some good signage, and perhaps some people visiting late at night need to be told a little more often, you know, about littering and leaving stuff. And so, you know, there are ordinances about littering, open containers, and that sort of thing, and that's an issue too, to kind of enforce that a little more. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Kelly Archer, followed by Sharice McHugh.
My name's Kelly Archer, and I live on Mill Street, and I'm here to discuss the city's decision to not resurface or maintain proper drainage on the final block of Mill Street, the East End. I have made my voice heard at City Hall multiple times, beginning last March. While many parts of downtown are currently being resurfaced, the crumbling asphalt and drainage on Mill Street continues to be unmaintained and ignored for some 40 years, though many resurfacing projects have come and gone. Here are some factors. Number one, during the light resurfacing project in 2013, the block was scraped and prepped. In the last moment, Mo Sharma, then-city engineer, stopped the resurfacing of the block, seeing the road was in too much disrepair for this type of resurfacing. Yet, the road had already been degraded by the scraping for the project. And once again, on this latest time, again, the city was in too much disrepair to repair. Number two, at one point, drain infrastructure was put in place on both sides of the block. An underground pipe runs the length to the creek on the south side. The north side leads to a large metal grate drain. The total lack of maintenance of the drain system means rainwater for two blocks floods my property rather than being directed to the drain. Number three, for the new water pipeline replacement project, trenches were dug and pipes installed on the block. As of today, five months later, the contractor has not resurfaced the trenches with asphalt. In fact, I found out yesterday, the trenches will not be resurfaced, as is normal. When representatives of the When representatives of the city, CCWD, and the pipeline contractor all visited the site and told me, "A small asphalt strip cannot be put on a degraded street, or it will crumble." The trenches will remain filled with crumbling, dusty base rock. While the gentlemen were there, they did accommodate one of my wishes. They devised a plan to build a temporary berm to help drainage, and I will certainly thank them when that is complete. Maas, the city engineer, told me the reason for not resurfacing this one block in downtown was lack of budget. He will, quote, "keep in mind, keep the street in mind on the next round of improvements." And I appreciate that. Given the factors I speak of, I strongly advocate that this block be resurfaced on the next round of street repairs, which I hope is next year or sooner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John, do you want to respond briefly, or deal with it offline?
Offline, I think.
Okay. Thank you. We will talk to your concerns. Yeah, sure. Sharice, followed by Joaquin Jimenez.
Good evening, council. It is my great pleasure this evening to formally introduce you to Kristalin Geet. Come on up. Kristalin will be the new CEO of the Half Moon Bay Coast Side Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, starting October 15th. She will be with us until then, every day, learning the ropes, including Pumpkin Festival. She comes to us as the number, from the number two at Carmel, Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. So she knows chamber, she knows visitor bureaus, she knows coastal. She is an emerging leader with the Western Association of Chamber Executives to that board, which I served on for six years, which is actually quite a feather in her cap, because she has been identified as a future leader for that organization that represents about 20 western states. Kristalin was a communications major, is very social media and technologically savvy, and I think that she will be carrying on in very good seed. And I think we're all very lucky to have had her, and I thank my board for finding someone that is so competent. Kristalin, would you like to say hello?
Hello. I'm super excited to come to this wonderful community. I've been researching and visiting for the last 10 weeks, and everybody has been very wonderful and open-armed, and I'm extremely excited on figuring out what you would like the future of the business community to bring. And I hope we will do wonderful things in the future, and I'm looking forward to it.
And I will be here to answer any questions on the BID subject.
Okay. Thank you, Sharice. Thank you, Kristal. Welcome to the community. Joaquin?
Good evening. I'm here representing the Latino Valley Committee today. We've been working on a few things, a few options that we would like to present to the city council today and to the city of Half Moon Bay about our farmlands. One of the ideas that we have is about implementation of our agricultural and environmental class for middle school and high school students here in Half Moon Bay. I met with a board member here from Half Moon Bay and presented the idea that we had, one of the many ideas that we had, and she brought it to the superintendent and one of the principals, one of our schools, and they actually, they are interested. So what I'm here today is to actually invite, you know, anybody and everybody who would like to be part of a committee, to work on new ideas, to implement these programs in our community, hopefully, looking forward to helping our farmers keep their farmland. And that's our main reason we're doing this. You know, we've been very outspoken about, you know, the growth of marijuana on the coast, and we're looking into alternatives. So we are actually looking into other programs in the area, curriculums that we can bring to our community, and hopefully, working with Pilar Citos, Cunha High School, maybe an expansion of the Hill Program that we have at Granada School, to actually, to educate our community and keep the farms alive. We don't want, you know, to overdevelop Half Moon Bay, you know? That's not our interest. We do one housing, you know, affordable housing for community members. So that's one thing we do want, but, you know, we want to keep our farmlands, and we want to make sure that our students learn about agriculture and the environmental science. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. That's a good start, that we really need to work together more and try to implement some of these ideas. So thank you very much.
We're hoping to make an invitation to members of our community together pretty soon, you know, city council members, school district members, and other members, farmworkers, farmers, and of course, you know, Farmer John will be, he's always in our minds, you know? We want to help and work with him. Thank you.
Anyone else, public forum, on items not on the agenda? We come to the consent calendar now. Do I have a motion?
We need to pull the ADU item because Adam has conflicted it. Yeah, but we need to indicate that we're pulling that item.
Yes.
So I'd make a motion to approve Consent Calendar 1A, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, and move 1B to the following meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's that? Item 2A, Resolution Approving the Program of Expenditures and Assessing the Levy for the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement District for Fiscal Year 2018 to 2019. Matthew?
It feels like I have not been here forever. I've been gallivanting across the globe, but I'm back. I'm back. And it's good to be with you tonight. Hopefully, this will be a simple item. What we're bringing before you today is a resolution to approve our levy assessment and boundary area of the hotel business improvement district here in Half Moon Bay and on the coast side. By way of background, the hotel, the city established the Hotel Business Improvement District in 2004, and then it was updated in 2017 to expand the boundaries, to include all the hotels, basically from Montero to the southern border of the county, in Santa Cruz County. The purpose of the Hotel Business Improvement District is to promote lodging at these hotels, especially midweek, when they're less busy. You know, you get a lot of tourists on the weekends, but midweek, they're less busy, so to promote additional lodging, to market our hotels, and really, all the businesses here on the coast side, and to fund the other BID-related activities. The managing agency is the Coast Side, Half Moon Bay Coast Side Chamber of Commerce. And within the hotel BID business district, as of May 2018, there were 971 total rooms. That's now over 1,000 with the opening of the new Best Western Hotel. And the way the BID is funded is a $1 per rented room per night assessment that each hotel charges. So there's the potential for about $365,000 a year from the BID. But again, it's a self-funded program, so that tax is used to fund the work that the BID group does. The board of the BID is, it consists of the owners of the hotel properties. The city has a seat at the table, and again, it's overseen by the Chamber of Commerce. So on an annual basis, the chamber publishes, is required to publish, an annual report. It spells out the prior year's activities. It spells out the revenue and estimated expenses for the upcoming year, including any surplus funds. It talks about recommended assessments for the upcoming year and recommended changes to the boundaries, if any. So in May of this year, we received the report from the Chamber of Commerce for the period January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017. They had a net income of $5,700. Some of the highlights, they combined the BID website with the Chamber of Commerce website. I believe the report said that the chamber was getting 3,000 to 4,000 hits, and now they get about 18,000 hits. So it's really, really increased visibility and traffic, which benefits not just the hotels, but all the businesses here on the coast side. They've hosted dozens of tours with meeting planners and travel writers, which usually spells, turns into conferences being booked here and business events being booked here, as well as the city being included in publications, travel publications and business publications. So that's an important part of the work they do. They've increased midweek corporate bookings significantly, and the records show that about 11,000 bookings are directly attributed to BID leads from the website. For 2018, they estimate they'll have income of about $251,000 and expenditures of $246, and then they also have a reserve fund, and it currently sits at about $33,000. So based on all this, the recommendation is that we maintain the $1 per rented room per night and maintain the current BID boundaries. And prior to this meeting, the city did not receive any protests to these recommendations, but we do need to hold a public hearing to take the opportunity to hear any other potential protests or questions about this. And as Sharice mentioned, she's available to answer any questions. So we recommend approving this pending your conversation or questions for us.
Open the public hearing about the BID issue? Not hearing any issues, I close the public.
So I just have a couple of quick questions for us. The processing of all the money that comes in, where does that go exactly, again? Is that through the city or through the chamber?
So the city collects a tax, and then it's then remitted to the chamber because they administer the BID.
Do we collect any funding for that, for the administrative fees that we deal with on that end?
I don't believe so. I think it's a direct pass-through.
And then, you know, based on the occupancy percent of what we estimate Half Moon Bay to be, and then how many room nights we're talking about, and us collecting $146,000 total, is my understanding?
That was in the prior year.
The prior year.
The estimates for this coming year are higher.
Yeah. So are we feeling like everybody is being forthright? Because when I added it up, it did not make sense.
You know, I'm not sure, and maybe Sharice can speak, too, you know, whether this information is audited and how that's tracked.
So when I was estimating in the year 2017, actually, Cameron's Best Western Plus was supposed to open October 2016, just in case anybody missed that. So that was in my books for my budget of 2016. It was in my books, the estimate again, in my budget of 2017. Yay, we got it in September, yeah, September of 20, well, when they opened, you know, June or July of 2018. So the estimates on the income and the actuals were down because that hotel was not giving any revenue. We were also a little bit down because even though the boundaries were chosen from delta slide to the county line, we have two hotels that have been delinquent. One is La Costanera, and one is Oceanfront Inn, which I'm working, we don't really...
Costa Noah, not La Costanera.
Oh, sorry. Costa Noah. I did say La Costanera. Costa Noah. So we have some discrepancies on that one, which city staff and I are working to bring them in line, although I think Costa Noah possibly might be a lost cause. Do we have a way of actually knowing? Every once in a while, I will take some hotels, and I'll take what I think the average room night is, take the TOT, okay, which we know is 12%, and then try to extrapolate it, but it's basically by the swag method, because you can't really know exactly how many persons were in the bed for any given, for any given month. So it is on the honor system. I believe that most of them are, you know, they collect it from the person staying. So it's a pass-through. You know, they have 12% TOT, $1 per rented, so they collect it and they pass it through. I have no reason to believe that they're not being honest. You did the numbers, and you think? I mean, you're a hotel guy.
I mean, I am a hotel guy.
Yeah.
So I think, I think what this tells us is, we should probably take a look at, a way to at least audit some of these numbers and just make sure. And really, this is for the benefit of these hotels. You know, as Sharice mentioned, it's a pass-through for them. It's also a pass-through for the city. We just are the collecting agency. And this is a tax that the hotels have actually chosen for themselves so that they could fund marketing activities. But I think there's probably a way through our TOT collections that we can at least verify some of these numbers.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think as long as we're actually doing staff work and not charging an administrative fee, we should at least, you know, audit and make sure that everything's, you know? Yeah. Sure, if there's some way to do that, I think that would be good.
I think the not charging a fee in the beginning, the council felt that since the city is the beneficiary of the TOT and the money coming in, that that was why that happened. They didn't want to take the money away that could be used in, you know, putting more persons in the beds. I do have one correction. It was 18,000 web visits per month, and I'm happy to say we're now up to 29,000 per month. How'd you get that in?
I just want to mention, I know the city ultimately benefits in terms of, you know, revenue, but I think there's a point of accountability, too, that that's part of our job vis-à-vis the public, so I think it's wise to do something. Yeah.
Can I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt the Resolution Approving the Program of Expenditures and Assessing the Levy for the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement District for Fiscal Year 2018-19.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 3A, San Mateo County Library JPA amended by bylaws and second amended joint powers agreement. Matthew?
Okay. I am pleased to be before you tonight to present the updated JPA agreement and bylaws to help with our relationship with the San Mateo County Library System. And I'll just point out, we have Enri Despain, the director of the county library system, here with us tonight, in case we have any specific questions about the work that they do. Quick backgrounds, the county established the Free Public Library in 1912, and in 1999, the San Mateo County Library JPA was established. The city is a founding member. It was part of the JPA from the beginning. There are 11 city members up and down the peninsula, as well as they serve the unincorporated county areas. The JPA is overseen by a separate independent entity, which consists of a governing board made up of elected officials from the member cities, so we have a representative on that governing board. There's also an operations committee that city staff participates in. The, all this is governed by the bylaws and the JPA agreement, and that JPA agreement was last updated in 2018. was last updated in 2004. So what do we get for this? We, as a member agency, we own our own library, which, as you see in the picture and have experienced recently, is we have our brand new library. It's really a shining light right now and it's definitely, I think, sets a really high bar for future facilities and we're really lucky to have it. It is operated on a daily basis by the county library system and they do a fantastic job of providing, obviously, a massive collection of books. We, as being part of this library system, which is also part of the peninsula library system, we have the benefit of having access to materials throughout the county. So there's a huge economy of scale there that the community gets to take advantage of. We obviously take advantage of the robust website that the county has, which allows people to check out books, you know, reserved books online and other materials online, download eBooks and music and movies. And, you know, this library system is really cutting edge. I've been to sessions at conferences where you get to see and hear what other cities are doing and other jurisdictions are doing. And our county library system is so far ahead of, I would venture to say, almost every library system in the country. We are really lucky to have them here operating our library. They bring innovative ideas like, you know, the classic bookmobile, but then they have bikes with books. They do pop-up events in our parks and activities. They provide food for families that are underserved. They provide literacy programs for adults and children. We have the fabulous Makerspace, which allows members of the community to have access to some really high technology for being creative and expertise in learning how to use those pieces of equipment and the software that operate them. I'm sure that we could go on and on and on with all the benefits we get from having this fantastic library system, but it's through the JPA that we have access to this. So it's a really important part of how we serve our community in this area. So in 2014, the governing board set up a subcommittee to take a look at the JPA agreement. Given the rapid change to how libraries serve the community and especially how forward-thinking our library system is, they really thought that we should take a look at the documents that govern these operations and make sure they're keeping up with what's happening. And so members of the operations committee and in the governing board served on this subcommittee for a couple of years to draft the changes to these documents. And what they were really looking at was the allocation of property tax dollars. As a JPA, the library is entitled to a percentage of the tax dollars collected throughout the county. So they are funded through regular tax dollars. Cities don't make separate contributions from their own budgets. It comes right out of the property tax dollars. They looked at minimum service hours for providing services to the community and looked at areas where there's just a lack of clarity within the agreement's language. So the major changes to the bylaws are, all changes need to now be done by a two-thirds vote. For some reason, the bylaws were majority and the agreement was two-thirds. And the governing board decided that the two-thirds vote was appropriate for this type of an agreement. Another big change is that allows the formation and association with 501(c)(3) nonprofits by the JPA, and they've recently set up the, correct me if I, it's the San Mateo County Library Foundation, which is similar to some of the work that our local friends of the libraries do, but it really is going to allow for some significant fundraising and other activities here in the county. Major changes to the actual agreement, donor funds. There are certain communities where the property tax revenues that go to the library JPA outpace the expenditures that the JPA needs to run the libraries in those communities. And in the past, those funds were just held in an account for capital work or major initiatives within that city's system. The change that's being made is it's going to move to a 50-50 split. So once all of the operating costs for that city are utilized, anything above and beyond that will be split 50-50 between the JPA as a whole and that donor city. And there's an exemption that if they have major capital or the work they need to do, that would happen before the split. But it's a way for some of our wealthier cities to share some of that wealth throughout the county. They also have reduced the minimum service hours, the minimum population to have the full service hours was 10,000 individuals. They've reduced that to 6,500 to provide more services to some of our smaller areas within the county. And then a most significant note to us, part of the reason we're able to get this library built is the prior JPA agreement included language that obligated the county to pay for 50% of the cost of a major renovation or replacement of the Half Moon Bay Library. Now that it's complete, obviously, the county doesn't want to be obligated to this anymore and this building should have a significant life. And so that language has been removed from the agreement. And we were the only city that had that kind of language, so that language doesn't exist for any of the other cities at this point. The governing board unanimously approved these changes in February of 2018. It does require approval by all member agencies, and I think to date, there's only three of us left that need to approve it. And then the county plans to approve this in November. And I just pressed the wrong button. Oh, okay. So our recommendation is that we adopt the recommended, the revised bylaws and JPA agreement governing library services here in San Mateo County. And again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, as is Anne Marie.
Groom is our representative on our, for the JPA in Half Moon Bay, more or less, or is that how it works? Oh, is it Deborah Penrose? Okay, cool.
Yes. So we will always have a city council member represented on the governing board? Yes.
Deborah is the principal and I'm the alternate.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay, authorizing approval of the amended bylaws for the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Authority and the second amended joint powers agreement between the County of San Mateo and the Cities of Atherton, Belmont, Brisbane, East Palo Alto, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Millbrae, Pacifica, Portola Valley, San Carlos and Woodside relating to library services.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you try that again?
What?
Hold your breath.
Really good.
I know.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Yeah. I've heard only wonderful things from my constituents about the new library, so it's a great success.
I appreciate it. I got kids in the science program every Tuesday night. Good.
Item 3B is appointment to fill a vacancy on the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. Anybody from the city need to address this?
No, the council can go ahead and let us know how to proceed.
I could not believe the amount of fantastic candidates that applied for this. When I was reading through, I was, if we could have this type of amazing candidate pool for every, I was shocked at what a great pool this was. Just for the record, for everybody that applied, thank you. I actually went personally when reading through it, I'll start off and then we can go through, but I liked, what's this guy's name? Stephen Patton. And we can go through, but born and raised in Half Moon Bay, right? I believe. And has a civil engineering background, which is, you know, something we could use when we're talking bridges, but I'm open to suggestions. I like that person a lot. Let me hear what you guys got.
I was also very impressed with the candidate pool. And I was thinking, you know, really the, yeah, all of them. So I was thinking, maybe we just draw their, draw a name from a hat, because they're all so excellent. I don't know how to be, you know, fair and discriminating among this bunch, really. The other alternative might be that we actually bring them in for an interview at the next meeting, and so we can actually see them and hear from them. But, yeah, I had a hard time actually zeroing in on one person.
I like this guy because he's got a Master of Science in Civil Engineering, and he's currently a licensed civil and structural engineer, and he's got 14 years of experience. He's currently still working, he's not retired. He's, couldn't be more involved in understanding the bridge from that perspective. I think, I think he would, I think from just looking at the resumes without knowing any of these people, that one stood out. Did you have something?
I also was totally impressed. All five people really bring something to the table. I'm not sure that somebody with a technical background is the kind of person we're looking for. I can see that argument, but this is more of a policy committee. I know Charles Nelson. He's got a lot of skin in the game. He used to have a Main Street business. He worked hard on making sure that we did not destroy the bridge. So I don't, I feel like any of the five would be an asset, but my slight preference would be for Charles Nelson.
So I actually, you know, to your point about not necessarily having an engineering background, Mr. Suthausen, Axel Suthausen, is like an architect, a structural designer. You know, to me, that has some appeal because of the historical nature of the bridge and the cosmetic improvements we need, at the same time that we want to maintain as much historical integrity. So, you know, I was attracted to that. You know, Jim Henderson, very involved in the community for years. And then Valdir Faria, I thought he had, he's been part of NET, right? So he's been grooming himself for appointment to a city commission. And I really like that about it. And he also was very interested in the historical, that's why I thought maybe we draw from a hat. You know? Yeah. I actually asked the city clerk, I don't know if she did it, to bring their names on sheets of paper. You know? But maybe one thing we could clarify, so is Mr. Doughty still here?
No.
Okay. I was thinking if somebody could explain to us the scope of this advisory committee, what will they be dealing with? What's the meat? Okay. What's the meat of their work to be done?
Here comes John.
What's this committee going to do anyway?
Yeah.
It's funny, Maz and I were talking as you were discussing and debating, and our takeaway, and Maz's feeling, and I kind of tend to concur with it, is that actually, technical expertise would not be all bad. We have a lot of individuals who are, I think frankly, representing the interest of the businesses. I think we have a good representation for Chamber, for other parties to that point. And Jerry Steinberg is sitting on that, who provides a great deal of benefit. But we wouldn't be averse to a technician and a technical person being added into the mix. It's always good to have another set of eyes, ears and thoughts as we sort of work our way into a very challenging reconstruction and rehabilitation of this bridge. So if that's the question at hand, we would be supportive of that and, but, and we agree this, I looked at this pool and was also impressed by it. It's, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a bad choice in it. I think it's a difficult choice ahead because I think they're all great.
Well, the funny part is, when I was going for my choice, I was remembering the lack of that type of experience that we have in the current makeup, which is the same basic argument there, and how it's nice to have somebody with that process, considering we already have quite a bit of other there. So that was, that was also my mindset going in.
So since you two seem to have a strong opinion about it, I'll let you hash it out and I'm good to go. How's that?
You're really putting me on the spot.
If you feel strongly, I'll go with you.
I like Debbie's idea because I can see merit in all five of the applicants. And picking from a hat makes as much sense as anything at this point. No? But again, I'm willing to listen to someone else's input.
Let the city attorney draw, you know, somebody with legal standing and disinterested, you know.
How about you let me draw from the hat and I can look in it before I pick it? How's that?
How about you can draw from the hat, but you can't look? How's that?
I want nothing to do with that.
Excellent. So I'll make a motion then, I guess. These people. To appoint Charles Nelson as the at-large member to the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Charles.
Okay.
Are there any future agenda items that you'd like to bring up either?
Yes, I do have one. I'd like us to bring back as soon as conveniently possible, the agreement with the stables regarding the horses on the beach. I, you know, I heard two years ago that the contract was coming up this year, now I'm hearing it's 2020, and I wanted to come back because I understand there's provisions that allow us to revisit it in the interim. And I'm just hearing more and more about it. I think we need to understand publicly what the agreement says, what's our scope of latitude in dealing with this, but I want us to have that discussion and have it publicly. So, soon.
That's time.
Yeah.
Just throw some manure into the mix here. I have heard other people say that we should also discuss the possibility of an ordinance that not only the stables that we have a contract with, but all the horses would be required to have diapers. So as long as we're going that way, maybe we should bring that back as an ordinance to have all horses be required to have diapers in the city.
Can we explore both topics at the same time-ish? I mean, because it's basically...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient direction? Thank you.
So I have one too. So we're addressing the short-term rental whole scene, which is great. But the tax collection piece of the eight, of the, of this is still, in my estimation, a complete mess. And HDL does the tax collecting currently, and I think we need, I would like to bring it up and figure out when that contract is due to expire and what we can do, what our alternatives are, because I do not feel like they are serving our best interest.
As part of the short-term rental... As part of the short-term rental ordinance or just as a standalone item?
Standalone, yeah, before, because the short-term rental ordinance might still be a ways out, I would think, and the collecting of the taxes is currently happening, and they just changed to, it used to be quarterly, and now they're changing it to every month as well, which is a whole nother thing, which I don't know what that, what that means for the city as well in terms of having to process all that stuff, and I just need to get my arms around it to understand what's going on.
So is that sufficient direction? Good. I have nothing. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.